I would like to call this meeting to order. First, the recognition of members present. All members of the City Council are present except Counselor Day, who's been called away on other business. The City Administrator is present, Mr. Sutherland, and the City Clerk is Hughes to record the meeting. If you would please join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, let's get right through this meeting and maybe we can adjourn before 9:30. We have one speaker under public comment. Don Pylon, would you please step forward and state your name and address for the record?
May I?
You may if you wish, but you don't have to. Actually...
Actually, you wanted me to look at the floor, right? Yeah. Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here today to speak to you about the Board of Education's new lease that they signed on the tottle end. After reviewing the lease, I've read the lease entire, in its entirety, a couple of things have jumped out at me in the lease. After reading the newspaper article written by Liz, the Journal Tribes article, it was clear to me that there were a number of important points that was left out of the paper. One was, it's a 10-year lease, it's over 10 years, the Board of Ed would be paying $3.5 million for their lease. At the end of 10 years, the Board of Ed would have the ability to renew the lease if they so choose for another 10 years, or they could trigger an option to purchase the property. In the lease, it was a little unclear at that point. They had a price of $2.95 million, or it said, "at market rate." So, it may not be market rate in 10 years. It was unclear as to how they were going to determine, there was no mention of how they were going to determine market rate in 10 years, but the price was $2.95 million after having paid $3.5 million in rent. The 10-year period was a triple net lease, so the city is going to be paying all the cost on the building exclusives of taxes because the town is a non-taxable entity. So, no taxes, but everything else is the responsibility of the town. Now, that also is an issue because in Exhibit A of the lease, they had a drawing of the, or a floor plan of the property, or the building. There was no indication as to how many square feet is in the building. Usually when you write a commercial lease, you'll name, you'll write, "building consisting of 10,000 square feet," but this lease did not have anything addressing the amount of square feet. Now, that's important because the CAM charge, what they call the CAM charge, or the triple net portion, is based on your, the amount of square feet. So, I thought it was odd whoever drafted the lease didn't put in the amount of square feet in the building. The other thing that really, as a citizen, concerned me deeply is how the school board approached this. This was not done in a public matter. It was totally done behind closed doors. They signed the lease in executive session. There was no vetting of this process. There was no, there was no, there's no one else here, so I'll take their minutes.
No, that's just the three minutes have passed, just to ask you to summarize or...
There was no vetting of the process. The public was not invited to participate. They cut this deal with their attorney. If their attorney and the school board had done their due diligence, which they apparently had not, they would have learned about the federal funding that had built that park and the exclusion for nonprofits. And that deeply concerns me, and it should, that should concern everyone else listening because it will jeopardize the funding for that park. And it's put the city in a very bad position. More recently in the paper, it indicated that they are going ahead with occupying that building. And I don't know where the city is, or where you are, Mr. Mayor, or the City Administrator are, or where the council is, on discussing with them what kind of position they have put the city in. If they are that arrogant and feel as though they are just going ahead and they don't care about the federal funding, or the bad position they have put us in, then my recommendation to you this evening is a citizens' referendum to recall the school board and to terminate the superintendent. We can't have this in the town. And I know that's a very, very strong message to send them, but they have to work, we have to build consensus here and work together. They obviously don't want to work together, so terminate the superintendent and recall the school board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I certainly don't want any comments on pending legal matters from the council. I would hope perhaps in the administrative update, we might hear a little bit of something, but probably not. So, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that would be, I'm looking for a motion to accept a consent agenda.
So moved.
So, I have a motion from Counselor Smart and seconded by Counselor Menthorn to accept the consent agenda. Is there any comment, or does any counselor wish any item on the consent agenda to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remove D and handle that by itself.
Okay. Item D will be removed from the consent agenda and be read by the council resource, Counselor Johnston. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? To my right? To my left? Seeing none. On approval of the consent agenda, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
So, the motion passes 6-0 to accept the consent agenda. Item D and the consent agenda was removed. Counselor Johnston, do you have a motion to make? Or are you willing to make this motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Shuing, I'm going to butcher this, Shanaiing Lan, who is located at Saco Massage, 150 Main Street, has applied for a massage therapist license. The applicant has applied for all applicable permit fees and has provided a copy of her certificate of graduation in compliance with Chapter 138, Subsection 138-9, Basic Proficiency. She has applied for a state-of-main massage therapist license, which is currently pending. Be it ordered that the City Council grant Shanaiing Lan a massage therapist license in accordance with the codes of the City of Saco, Chapter 138, and I move to approve the order.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Doyle. I'd like clarification from the City Clerk. I understand that, from an email that you had sent just a little bit before the meeting, that you have, you believe that she holds her license now?
Yes. I had checked earlier this morning, and the license hadn't been approved, and just before closing, I checked again, and it was showing as active. And if you go to the back page, that bottom license, I have highlighted where it shows the status is active, and it has the start date as July 1st, 2019.
So, it started, and presumably that means at the beginning of business on July 1st. So, it's currently an effective license. Thank you very much, Ms. Hughes. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. The next motion up is the, is a public hearing and final reading on a charter amendment, Charter Amendment Number 1, which is to effect Article 2, Section 2.09, ordinances in general posting and publishing. And that motion is Counselor Smart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter as described in MRSA Title 38, Chapter 111, Section 2104. The process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by the council. Additionally, if approved by the council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. This particular change is meant to add posting of proposed ordinance amendments or new ordinances to the city website and at City Hall for public hearings and the adoption of any ordinance as a requirement. In addition, it also saves money on advertising costs by publishing the summary of the proposed ordinance for the public hearing versus full ordinance and striking the requirement that the ordinance be published again after its adoption. I move to open the public hearing for the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number 1, 2.09, ordinances in general, posting and publishing dated June 17th, 2019. I move to, oh, sorry.
Second.
And I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor Copeland, to open the public hearing. Are there any members of the, oh, excuse me, any comments to my left? Seeing none. To my right? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Yes.
By 6-0 vote, the public hearing is now open. Do any members of the public wish to step forward to comment on this important charter amendment? Seeing none. Counselor Smart, if you would read the, close the public hearing, and then, once that's passed, read the final item, which is to place it on the ballot in November as a separate reading and vote.
If that's passed.
If it passes, that's right.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor Menthorn. Any comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. The public hearing is now closed. Counselor Smart?
The City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the final reading of Saco City Charter Amendment Number 1, 2.09, ordinances in general, posting and publishing dated June 17th, 2019, and further order that the amendment be placed on the November 5th, 2019 ballot. This amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January 1st, 2020.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Smart, seconded by Counselor Menthorn to place this item on the November 5th ballot, and importantly, to cause it to take effect on January 1st, Any comments to my left? Counselor Menthorn?
The only quick comment I want to make is, the definitions seem to be on the end of the ordinance as opposed to at the beginning, as we find them quite frequently. So, the vocabulary words necessary and understanding necessary to read the ordinance fall at the end of it, which seems counterintuitive to the process, but for future reference, we should probably pick one and stick with it and put them all up front so we have some consistency across all of our ordinances. Thank you.
Right. Also, oftentimes definitions are placed in Article 1 as opposed to mingled across several articles, which would mean another charter amendment.
Yes.
Any other comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. This will appear on the November 5th ballot. Thank you very much. Next is Counselor Johnston.
The City Council endeavors to make a few amendments to the charter as described in MRSA Title 38, Chapter 111, Section 2104. The process for making amendments to the charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by the City Council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. This particular change is meant to clarify where full versions of the bond order shall be posted. In addition, it also saves money on advertising costs by publishing a summary of the bond order rather than a full version in a daily newspaper, having a general circulation in the City of Saco at least two weeks before the final action of the City Council and approval of five members of the City Council. Moved to open the public hearing for the document titled Saco City Charter Amendment Number 2, 6.1, borrowing for the permanent improvements, posting and publishing dated June 17th, 2019.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Doyle. Any comments to my right? Comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to step forward to speak on this important charter change? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Smart. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
The City Council hereby ordained...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a vote.
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 6-0. Counselor Johnston?
The City Council hereby ordains and approves the final reading of Saco City Charter Amendment Number 2, 6.15, borrowing permanent improvements, posting and publishing dated June 17th, 2019, and further order that the amendment be placed on the November 5th, 2019 ballot. This amendment, if approved by voters, would have an effective date of January 1, 2020.
Do I have a second? Okay. A motion has been made by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Menthorn that would place this on the November 5th ballot to take effect importantly on January 1st, 2020. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. This will appear on the November 5th ballot. Thank you. Next up, Counselor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sea Salt Products LLC Doing Business as Sea Salt Lobster Restaurant has applied for a renewal special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93.2. Staff recommends approval. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Menthorn, to open a public hearing on a special entertainment permit for Sea Salt Products LLC. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. Does anyone wish to step forward to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Sea Salt Products LLC Doing Business as Sea Salt Lobster Restaurant for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license, current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Counselor Doyle and seconded by Counselor Archer. And any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. Okay, so, getting right on to Counselor Doyle, who have another motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on an opinion from City Attorney Murphy, the City Council has requested review of all subdivision amendments in the Park North and Cascade contract zones. Recently, the Planning Board conditionally approved the re-subdivision of four Cascade Road to create one additional lot. The applicant, Amari Holdings, has also submitted a site plan application for construction of a 6,000-square-foot structure for 3,000-square-foot of business use and 3,000-square-foot of medical office space. The applicant is pending further review by the Planning Board of the site plan application until the council has issued its decision on this subdivision amendment, which is considered the ninth amendment to the overall Park North and Cascade's subdivision plan. The exhibits include items that reference all subdivision amendments and are included for the council's reference. Staff recommends approval of this amendment to the Cascade Contract Zone as conditionally approved under subdivision review by the Planning Board. I move to approve the first reading of this subdivision amendment to the Cascade Contract Zone and schedule a public hearing for this item on July 15, 2019.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Menthorn as a first reading of the, of an amendment to the contract zone, so, the subdivisions amendment. So, first, let me, before I ask Ms. Prescott to step forward, if she has any comments, any questions or comments by Counselors to my right? Seeing none. Any comments Counselors to my left? Seeing none. Mr. Sutherland?
Emily? I'm not sure. Oh, it is on. My light doesn't work anymore. We had separated this out from the other eight amendments because there was concern that this one was actually part of the Cascade Contract Zone, not the Park North Contract Zone. So, if this gets confusing, please have me stop and start over, or refresh, or call Emily up to assist me. This is the ninth amendment to a subdivision. This isn't a use change. This is a subdivision in which this one in particular is, has already been preliminary approved by the Planning Board. It's contingent on the council approving it as well. So, this catches us up to all subdivision amendments that have occurred in front of the Planning Board with this set of amendments plus what we have to approve still in a public hearing in a second and final in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any Counselor questions of Mr. Sutherland to my right? Any Counselor questions of Mr. Sutherland to my left? Ms. Prescott, would you like to add anything to Mr. Sutherland's comments? Thank you very much. And with that, we'll have a vote on this first reading, moving it to a public hearing on the 15th. Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. Next up is the Administrator's update.
Yep. I have a couple of items. There was a bid announcement. The City of Saco is soliciting proposals for various technology items. Proposals must be submitted on the RFP response form in a sealed envelope marked "Technology Refresh." Proposals will be accepted until July 15, 2019, 11:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Any questions regarding the project specifications should be directed to Ryan Pinheiro, Director of Information Technology, by emailing r.p.i.n.h.e.i.r.o@saco main.org with subject "Technology Refresh." We've been made aware that we've received additional state aid. The legislature approved a 3% municipal share. We had budgeted 2.5%, as that is what the governor had initially included in her budget. The 1/2 a percent of additional aid represents an estimated $285,000 in revenue for fiscal year 2020. City Hall will be closed both July 4th, this Thursday, and Friday, July 5th. The staff in City Hall have all signed on to take some of their accrued time for that day, so we are going to close City Hall for both those days. The Greek Festival will occur July 19 through the 21st at St. Demetrius on Bradley Street. And there has, there was a bit of a snafu this past week with our servers for our website, so things that were posted towards the end of last week did not show up until they refreshed it at 4 o'clock today, and we were not made aware of this glitch until this afternoon. So, if there were members of the public who were hoping to see a council packet, it didn't actually show up until 4 o'clock today, but we did meet our requirements to post it by having it downstairs last week. So, I guess technology isn't always our friend, but we'd like to hope that we can figure it out as we go, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on Mr. Sutherland's statements? Seeing none. Let's move to council discussion and comment. Counselor Archer?
Yes, with this recent use of what legislature, legislation approved?
Yes.
At 284,000, I would like us to kind of look at this strategically, maybe some of the items that we denied in the budget. We can relook at those items and see maybe if we can prove any things that we have previously denied with this additional funding.
Thank you very much. We, I expect that we will be, that the council will be seeing budget amendments coming up in July and in August to recognize some of those matters. Any additional comments or discussion to my right? To my left? Seeing none. Then, we're going to, we're going to go into the Parks and Rec real estate discussion in executive session. We don't have an update regarding the pre-K. We will on July 15th. So, do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, be it ordered that the City Council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6(c), Parks and Recreation Potential Real Estate.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, so, a motion to enter executive session was made by Counselor Menthorn and seconded by Counselor Copeland. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. We are now going to go into executive session.
Hello, we're alive.
Hey, we're alive.
So, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I move.
I have a motion by Councillor Copeland. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councillor Copeland, seconded by Councillor Mintern to come out of executive session. Any comment to this? Seeing none, Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintern?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to come out of executive session passes 6-0. Do we have a report?
Report is no report.
Thank you very much. There is no report coming from executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councillor Mintern, seconded by Councillor Copeland to adjourn. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland? Councillor Mintern?
Yes.
Councillor Smart?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Oh, the motion to adjourn passes 6-0. We are adjourned earlier than we have ever, ever, ever adjourned.
Wow.
A new record.
It's new fiscal year.
Oh, it's the new fiscal year. That's right.